Good evening. June 13, 2019 Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our invocation and pledge will be led by Zach Sorrels. Zach is in Cub Scout PAC 314, Arrow of Light rank. Please rise.
God bless the people of Longview and everyone around them. And let everyone be okay. And let us have a good council today. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Zach, thank you so much for doing that for us tonight. It takes a lot of courage to come up here at your age and give a prayer and pledge in front of all these people. You did a very good job. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tonight in employee recognition, we're recognizing the parks playground safety inspectors. The National Recreation and Park Association offers the industry-leading certification program in playground safety. The Certified Playground Safety Inspectors CPSI program. This certification program provides the most comprehensive and up-to-date training on playground safety issues, including hazard identification, equipment specifications, surfacing requirements, and risk management methods. We would like to recognize our five certified playground safety inspectors, which is the most we've ever had on their recent certification or recertification. The CPSI course is three days and two days of practical hands-on training and a final day for the written exam. Upon passing the exam, the certification is good for three years. City of Longview has 34 parks with over 100 pieces of play equipment. Over the past two months alone, our inspectors have completed and documented 158 inspections at our parks. Tonight, we are happy to recognize Ray Bostic, Daniel Small, Mike Tommoneo, Michael Corrigan, and Chris Cranford. Please come forward. Stay down there.[208.26][208.26](laughter) The rest of you guys come on up.[211.12][211.12](laughter) Yes, I got you. Yeah. Okay. Hey, you know, this is really important. You know, we take it for granted, we go to the park, we put on the playground equipment, and we just assume it's going to be safe. Well, it's not safe unless they make it safe. Because people can tamper with our equipment, people do things that aren't always with good intentions, and you guys are always there to make sure that that doesn't happen. And so, we appreciate all the guys and ladies that work in our Parks Department that go out there and make sure that our kids can go out and play safely in our parks as we expect. So, I appreciate y'all taking the time to go through the course, get the certification, because we need all the help we can get in that department. Because, you know, if one kid gets hurt, it's a tragedy, and we got to make sure that doesn't happen. That's what you all do, and I appreciate you very much. You play a vital role in the safety of our children. Summertime, they're out there all the time. So, this is a great time to have this done, and I appreciate you guys very much. Thank you so much. Good job. Thank you, sir. Good job. Thank you, sir. Come on up here. Come on up. Come on up here. I want you up here. Right on next to me. I'm really short. All right. Thank you, guys. Appreciate y'all very much. Tonight in our community recognition, I wanted to take a little bit of time tonight to recognize someone that was really special to me and really special to our community, and that was the passing Ms. Ruby Floyd. And I know many of you all knew Ruby. I'm going to read her obituary, then I'm going to ask the family members to come up. Ruby was born to Falvey and Cleo Floyd on November 30, 1957, in Longview, Texas. Ruby is a person that was enthusiastic about life. She constantly attended church. Ruby participated in special Olympics all of her life as a track star. She was regularly a part of parades and public events throughout the East Texas area. She was a cheerleader for various Little League football teams, and she was an average supporter of the Longview Lobos. She is well-known to the East Texas area by politicians, businesses, civic and social organizations, sports leagues, and governmental entities. She is well-loved and liked by people in communities and neighborhoods far and wide. She continued to go and be part of the community even after her health began to fail. Ruby spoke honestly and straightforward about her feelings and demonstrated her love for people on a consistent basis. Ruby was preceded by her death by her mother and father, siblings Helen, Sharon, Richard, Willie, Sandra, Yvette, Wanda, Falvey Jr., and Thelma. She leaves in her cherished memories her sisters Deborah, Longview, Favretta of Dallas, her brothers Tyrone, Tony, Kenneth, and Gee Floyd, all of Longview, and a host of nieces, nephews, friends, and other family members and loved ones. So, Gee, come on up and bring all your family with you, please. There's some pictures of Ms. Ruby up on the screen. I'm going to tell you some interesting things about Ms. Ruby. Number one, I've known Ms. Ruby since my kids were this age playing ball at Stamper Park. And Ms. Ruby was the first one at every practice, she was at every game. Every time a ball went out of the playing field, she was the one to retrieve it. But anytime one of those kids hit a home run, she would run and get that ball, and she would bring it back and hand it to their parent so that they could have that ball. She was such a special lady. She was always there cheerleading. She's just the kind of person that just brings your spirits up. She's an amazing, amazing human being, and we love her, we're going to miss her. She's a pillar of our community. And Gee, introduce your family. This is Gee Floyd. And I came to know Gee when we were running for mayor together, and I've known who Gee was, but I never made the connection that Gee and Ruby were brother and sister. I didn't even know that until after the campaign was going, and now I realize who it was. And I felt bad. I thought, wow, this guy should be the mayor. He's Ruby's sister. So, introduce your family for me, Gee.
Okay. Dr. Mike, this is my sister Deborah.
Hi, Deborah. What a pleasure.
And this is my sister-in-law Dorothy.
Hi, Dorothy.
And we do have, like I said, a lot of others that they were supposed to come, but their schedules and children and things like that. But anyway, we're glad to be here.
Well, I just want you to know how much we loved Ruby. Ruby was, you know, there's not many people in this community that don't know who Ruby Floyd was. You know, she was just that special person. And you know, for her to shine such a light on so many people should be something for all of us to take and go, you know, if Ruby can do it, we darn sure can do it. So, you know, that's something she leaves with me, and I think about it all the time. You know, I think of what a special impact she had on a bunch of eight, nine, 10, 11, 12-year-old kids, and that didn't stop because she followed them all the way through high school. I mean, she follows them, and not just my kids, every group of eight, nine, 10, 11, 12-year-old kids, all the way up. You know, she made such an impact. So, we take a lot from her life. She lived a good life, and she's going to be missed, but we love her to death. So, thank you all, we appreciate you being here. Thank you, brother. Appreciate you. Thank you so much. Let's have a hand for Ms. Ruby Floyd.
Thank you.
Thank you all so much. Appreciate you being here. Thanks, Gee. Gee Floyd. And for you all in the audience, you can go out in the foyer, there's some artwork of Ms. Ruby out there, and it's very special. It's very special to see her picture out there and all the things that she meant to us. And I just appreciate you all being here and allowing me to honor her. She's a wonderful, wonderful person. We are to citizen comment. I do have a few speaker cards. Nick Setzer.
Good evening, and thank you for the space and this time for citizens to come up and have a comment or two in front of you. My name is Nick Setzer, 1803 Chestnut Lane. I'm the pastor of, co-pastor, my wife will make sure I say that, of St. Andrew Presbyterian Church in Longview. But I come to you today not just as a pastor in this community, but as the board president of Family Promise of Longview, formerly Longview Interfaith Hospitality Network. It's been around in this community for over 15 years. Family Promise has played a major role in this community in keeping children who are facing homelessness off the streets and keeping their families together. We're one of the few places that a family can go and stay together during that time of trial. If you are a single dad and you have a child, it's hard for you to find a place to go if you are homeless. We are one of those places. We have served nearly 200 families, including over 400 children during our time here in Longview. And I come to you to say that Family Promise is an urgent need of financial assistance. Giving has not been what it is, what it has been in the past years. We receive roughly $28,000 less in charitable contributions, and as a result, we've had to use up some of our reserves, or most of our reserves, to the point that we are in trouble of having to close our doors and find new places for those families, the four families that we currently have in the program that are full with children during the hot summer. As a board, I can tell you that we are committed to this important ministry and have worked diligently to come up with a plan to get us out of this hole that we're currently in. But we need assistance. We need the support of our community. This council has talked at length about our growing homeless population in Longview. Family Promise is an important part of the road back to stability for many of those folks. I was touched recently by the recent Longview News Journal article about one of our recent graduates who was faced with homelessness and having to live in the car with his family. If only he had known about our program, we could have potentially come to help him and help that family. Family Promise is designed and called to help children and families just like that family. Just yesterday, we celebrated the graduation of one of our families, a single dad, who'd been in the program for almost a year, but now is stable, has a steady job, has found sustainable living going forward, and we celebrate with him. I plead to you and the community to support this great ministry. If you are a member of a faith community or know someone who is, tell them about our ministry. We house families in churches for a week at a time. Tell your faith leader that we need to be a part. It's our call as believers, help us invest in our children's. I know that that was my time. I have one last thing that I want to share with you in closing. This is a letter that was presented to us not because we were in dire need, but because she left it out of the goodness of her heart from nine-year-old Akira to a future family. Have a happy life like I experienced. Family Promise is the most nicest, kindest, and best place ever. I hope that you guys find out this place is as great as life is. From Akira, nine years old. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I have Ms. Ann Jackson.
How are you today?
How are you?
I'm going to change a little bit up of what I intended to do, which was talk about the lack of airborne protection for tenants and people in Texas. As far as this book, it's called Party in the Pines. We've discussed today the four people who just got certified. This is one of the best things that I have seen, especially for low-income people that I help, as far as programs that are out there. Thank you guys for making this and having this, because it's helped a lot of the people that I work with. And I work with Family Promise, and I had no idea today you were going to be here. Family Promise took a family in that I helped out, and they literally were going to have to separate because their child in another program, they were going to have to separate because their child was turning 18, and at 18-years-old, they are not allowed to stay together. They're actually separated. I won't say what program that was, but literally because of Family Promise, that 18-year-old got to stay with her family. It is a very, very important program, in my opinion, especially for certain people in certain age groups, because not everybody can do Highway 80 mission. You know, and there are certain rules and certain aspects. Family Promise fills a gap sometimes that we don't have here in Longview. In Longview, I am told by somebody, is one of the top cities in the United States for homelessness and helping people with a hand up, not a hand out. And I love that Longview has this reputation. But Family Promise needs help. I didn't know you were in this financial need. But this family literally just recently joined in a few weeks ago and didn't have to be separated. So, I was absolutely amazed by that. And I usually, when I'm helping some of them, I will bring free stuff. I will sit in the house with some of these people, help them find resources, bring them things, and they're like, wow, you actually brought us stuff, and you didn't even know we were here. I said, no, I try to do this. I have no idea what your needs are, your goals are, but I'll help you find and do them if I can. So, I know my time is almost up, and I am not going to speak about what I came here today, but thank you for this, because that has helped so many families, especially at the public library, where, you know, a lot of them come for the summertime, for booked storytime. This is not only for kids, this is for adults, folks. This has a lot of great information. Thank you.
Thank you. Alfred Hall.
Hi, my name is Alfred Hall. I stay in Lakeport, 550-2963, but I come here today to talk about Hensley Park. You know, we've been dealing with, it's for grownups, it's also for kids, youth, church members, but the problem out there we have is the lights. People are getting hit in the eye because we got a pole with 12 lights on it, but it's only six bulbs on it. You know, we've been dealing with that. Y'all probably seen the articles in the paper. A lot of church members, upstanding people, commenting on Facebook about the situation. And you know, I might have missed a meeting where y'all had about the lights, but I'm here today to speak on it, and you know, we trying to get the situation resolved. All we want, I went to the Park and Recreation, they sent me over to the South Side, I guess the maintenance building, and they assured me that the light bulbs were already in at the end of October, beginning of November last year. But the question of it is, why the bulbs ain't been put up? Now, we understand that, you know, a new facility is supposed to be built, but that's what, 2015? And it's 2019, and we still in the same situation. We just want the bulbs up. That's it. The fields are good, but the lighting is bad. Too many people are getting hit with the ball because we can't see. But people want to, adults want to have that enjoying time after work to go do something that's fun for them. I mean, each one of y'all have something y'all do when y'all get off work, to go do that that's fun for y'all. Go hang with your buddies, go shoot pool, or whatever. But that's what we do. I'm a, I play softball, but I'm a fisher out there. I'm an umpire. And sometime I can't see that ball coming in because of the lights, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Hey, Mr. Hall, if you will, our Parks Director Scott Karen is right there. He'll meet you after the meeting and talk to you about those bulbs, okay? Thank you for coming tonight, sir. Okay. I have no more speaker cards. We'll move on to presentation items. We'll present and discuss contract proposal from Enterprise Fleet Management. Mr. Archer.
Mayor, Council, Mr. Bonds, thank y'all for having us. For the past 16 years, Fleet Services has been working to improve our fleet. We moved from where we had a fleet that was barely serviceable to one where we have good, reliable vehicles. But today, we want to talk about a potential partnership with Enterprise where they can bring some benefits to us and decrease our cost of ownership of those vehicles. So, today, we'll have Nathan Pickle from Enterprise Fleet Management. Now, Enterprise is in the vehicle rental business, but their real expertise is in fleet management. If you can imagine, the fleet that Enterprise has, they know fleet management. And so, as he's speaking, he's going to talk about some different points, and I want to kind of point out a few things for you to really listen to, because they're a real benefit to the city. And those he'll talk about are leveraging the city's purchasing power, considering the resale value of our vehicles in the current market condition, because they'll have some resources to help with that. And then, lastly, using the vast network that they have so that we can get the best bang for our buck when it's time to sell that vehicle. So, and ultimately, all of these things will allow us to reduce our cost of ownership of our fleet. So, with that, let me introduce Nathan Pickle from Enterprise Fleet Rental, or Fleet Management, but there we go.
Mayor, City Council, Mr. Bonds, thank y'all for having me. Got a couple of slides here. I'll keep it brief, but I want to give you just a quick overview of kind of the proposal that I've put together for the City of Longview, and I think you guys are going to be excited to see. You got a great opportunity to improve some financial and operational efficiencies that you have at your fingertips. I think I'm hitting the wrong button. There we go. So, a little bit about Enterprise. You all may have rented a car from us before. We've got several locations here in the City of Longview, and we're one of the world's largest transportation leaders. And really, over the past probably 10 years or so, we have strengthened our partnerships in the public sector. I've listed a few here on the board that you can see here, a few here in the East Texas, North Texas area with Palestine and Waukesha, Tarryl, they're not listed there. But then we've got some also, some other larger cities that partner with us as well, Chicago, Little Rock, Detroit, just to name a few. And really, the reason they were doing things very, very similar to the way that the fleet is handled in Longview today, and when they realized that, hey, there was a financial and operational impact to partner with Enterprise, that's when they decided to partner with us. So, just briefly, and I included this in the packet of information that I shared with you, at Enterprise Fleet Management, we take a very holistic approach when we look at the fleet, from helping with the acquisition of the vehicle to making sure that it's the right vehicle that you all need for city services. Also, whether it's a maintenance program or a fuel program, and then really just helping out from a resale perspective. We're going to, as I say, resale a lot today, as Mr. Archer mentioned, but that's really where our expertise comes in and where you can leverage your buying power in the resale market to really help the city out. So, a little bit about the current fleet in the city today, we've identified 196 vehicles that are on the non-pursuit side, so that, not the police department, but just 196 total vehicles that are used for a variety of city services. But if you notice, as Mr. Archer said, he and Mr. McPhee, Mr. Bonds, the city's done a great job over the past 10 years or so reducing the age of the fleet. I think back in 2001, about 70% of the vehicles were 10-years or older. Now, the number's about 35%. But as you can see here, you all are holding on to them for an average of about 16 years. Driving low mileage, and that really helps you in terms of resale piece. Again, variety of vehicle classes, variety of types of manufacturers, whether it's Ford, GM, or Ram. But the thing that stood out to me as I was initially meeting with some folks was, if you notice that you've got a high number of vehicles that are aged, that are over 2014 model. So, what's happening is, as the vehicle starts to age, two big things happen. One, your maintenance and fuel expense go up, especially as the vehicles come out of warranty. And then, number two, the resale value of that vehicle goes down. So, really, the question that we help to answer is, how can we chip away, help the city chip away at that? So, let me kind of explain. So, at Enterprise, and Mr. Archer mentioned it, we look at a total cost of ownership concept, not just what you pay for it upfront, but what does that vehicle really cost in the city in maintenance and in fuel, and then what is it depreciating at in terms of its ability to gather some market value on resale? So, a typical half-ton truck, which is very common in y'all's fleet, 30% of it is made up on the capital side, whereas 70% is made up on the operating side. So, again, where you all have a very, very keen advantage is your ability as a government entity to purchase vehicles at a low cost, through government incentives that are allowed to every city and county municipality. So, this is an example, this is third-party information, just very quick. A brand-new Silverado truck invoice price is $40,000. Through the state contract and your ability to purchase the vehicle, you can purchase it for $26,000. That's nothing new. However, when you factor in resale, something very much different happens. Today, you all are holding on to the vehicle for an average of 16 years, as I mentioned before. So, when it comes to sell that vehicle, it's not worth very much. Maybe $500, maybe $1,000 on a good day. But if you pull some auction results, and I pulled these from Mannheim, which is one of the largest auction results, if you sell this vehicle at two years, you can sell it for $26,000. So, in this case, the capital outlay for the city is only $6. Now, I'm not saying that you need to sell every vehicle after two years. The point is, factoring in resale is a very important piece. If any of you ever rented a car from Enterprise, maybe if your car was in the shop or you had to go on an out-of-town trip, there's a very good chance that car wasn't over two years old. There's a reason for that. Number one, newer vehicles are safer, they're taking advantage of all the key safety features that are coming out from the manufacturer that are standard, not options. And then, number two, it's resale. So, that, those two factors are what we are presenting to the City of Longview for your fleet. Okay? Keep going to the next one. So, really, what we're helping to determine is, what is the optimal time to replace the vehicle before the operating costs for the city start to go up? As you lose market value, you can see on the slide, as that vehicle ages, what's the optimal time to replace? So, Enterprise, part of our partnership, is to provide the city with the data and the analysis to make the best decisions on when to do that, that is the most financially feasible for the City of Longview. So, lastly, in terms of financial impact, and I included these in my packet. So, the analysis that I've done, our conservative impact is going to be about $3 million over the next 10 years. So, this really for three big reasons. Number one is the resale impact, number two is maintenance expense, and number three is fuel. So, in a nutshell, today, you're purchasing roughly around 17 vehicles a year for the non-pursuit or the non-police departments for the city. Over the next four years, we want to reduce the overall age of the fleet down to an average of four years. And we do that through our cooperative agreements, through an open-end equity lease program. And how that works is that you purchase the vehicle, you pay a depreciated amount over a certain term, and then at the end of the term, we sell the vehicle, and the amount that the vehicle is sold for above and beyond what the market value is, that is your equity. It's very different than a lease that one of us can go down to the local Chevrolet dealership and do, where it's restricted on mileage. You're able to, as a public entity or a private entity, to do an open-end lease. And so, that frees up available cash flow, and as you can see, the overall impact just on reducing the age of the fleet and reducing your maintenance and fuel expense is about $1.8 million. Then, in turn, Enterprise is going to help sell some of the existing vehicles to replace those. And that current fleet equity is just north of $1 million. And if we sell the vehicles sooner than what they would normally be sold at, then you're going to be able to see that as well. So, that's where the net impact to the city is just at $3 million. Any questions or comments or anything?
Counsel, I have two questions, two comments. First question. So, this isn't, this isn't really like we're leasing vehicles from you all. Say that again. This isn't really like we're leasing vehicles from you all. We're still purchasing them, and you all are then selling them for us when the time is right. Is that correct?
It's not. So, it is a lease, but it's a very different lease style than a traditional lease that you would do at the dealership. It's an open-end lease to where...
Because most leases benefit the lease-ore and not the leasee. I mean, that's the typical.
Right. In this case, and how Enterprise makes its money is, we charge a management fee to provide all these services back to the city, and there's an interest portion of the payment, and then there's a fee at the end of the lease cycle for disposal, $400. That's how, that's how we make our money, that there's a little bit of, obviously, we're for-profit, private business.
Of course.
Built into that.
Is this, is this built into this estimated $3.5 million savings over 10 years?
That's 100% correct, yes, sir.
It's already built into that number.
Yes, sir.
I just, I didn't see that, but I'm assuming it had to be.
Right. So, an example would be, let's say you... So an example would be, let's say you bought a vehicle, it originally cost $20,000, over a three-year term, you guys have paid it down to $10,000, okay? And then we turn and sell it on your behalf, where we, the folks that sell all of our rental cars, and all of our other fleet customers, we sell it for $15,000. That $5,000 difference goes back to the city. It's your equity.
So here's my question, because it sounds like a very, I mean, obviously, Mr. Archer wouldn't have brought this to us if he didn't think this was something that had some merit to it, and we're not going to sit and be entertained by something we know has no merit or bearing on our city, so it has to be some, something decent to look at. But when I look at your current partners, like the cities, I don't know if this is all of them, but when I look at that, I see of these cities, it looks, and I don't know, I can't, I don't know all of them, but it looks like Longview would be the biggest populated city in that whole group.
On the ones that I listed, so a couple of others in Texas that are large, city of Beaumont, city of San Marcos-
Okay, so you have others besides this, I just was wondering why we would be the largest city, is there some breakpoint in the size of a city that has a larger fleet that where it doesn't make sense?
Not, not, not at all, because we see very similar where they're operating an aged fleet, so not at all, I mean-
Okay. So it really is just, that's just who it is?
That's right.
Okay, thank you so much. Any other questions?
Yep, one quick one.
Yes, sir.
So after 2022, we would own absolutely no vehicles.
That's correct.
And, so what happens if we decide that we didn't really like this deal after all, and we have absolutely no vehicles to operate the city?
Yeah, so Mr. Bonds asked me the same question a few weeks ago, so at any time, you can end the partnership anytime you want, that's the beauty of it. The way that our contracts are set up is that you can end the partnership anytime that you would like. Now, since you're paying just a portion of the vehicle price, of course, right, per month, basically what you owe is the residual value at the time. So if you were to say, hey, we don't like Enterprise, and we want to be done even after 12 months, let's say, and hopefully that wouldn't happen, then you can, you have a couple of choices, you can either purchase the vehicles outright, or you can continue to make those payments until, you know, you own the vehicle outright. We would just wouldn't provide any of our other services for you at that point.
So we could either pay cash right then, and purchase the vehicles outright, which is a big chunk of change, or just continue making the lease payments until the term is over?
That's right, and any new vehicles that you would need, you would just go back to the way you're doing it today.
Right, we would be no different than we were now.
Right.
That's correct. Very good, thank you, Mr. Moore. Any other questions? Well, thank you, sir, for the presentation, we appreciate that very much.
Thank you all very much.
I'm assuming we'll get back to this, Mr. Archer, on something in the near future, correct? Thank you, sir. Another public safety update, Chief Bishop.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Bonds, good evening. A couple of things, since our last meeting, we held a retirement reception for Officer Mike Grisham, and had the opportunity to spend some time with him, and congratulate him on his 35 years of service with the city, and I'd like to thank everybody that came out and wished him well, he had quite a fan club that showed up at the retirement reception, and I think we needed to find a bigger venue, but we didn't have one available, but he had his own cheer squad with him, and just want to, one more time, congratulate Officer Grisham on his 35 years, and thank him for his service that he provided to this community in the last 35 years. Also, I'd like to thank Heranis, as many of you know, they sponsored a citywide luncheon for the city employees that helped with the storm-related damage, and just want to thank them for the time and effort that they put into having the food trucks there, and inviting the city employees down for lunch, and opportunity to visit with them, and fellowship with other city employees, so thanks to Heranis for stepping out there and putting forth this event for our city employees. Last week, we also got to commission, we graduated three new recruits from the police academy, and we also got to commission them as well. I'd like to introduce to you Officer John Collier, Officer Eric Wilson, and Officer Raymond Lim. They completed and graduated the police academy, and we have them in a little bit of training, and then they'll be going into their field training very shortly, and hopefully we'll get them trained up, so we'll have three additional officers on the street, so want to congratulate them, and welcome them to the Longview Police Department. On Saturday, June 29th, at the Walmart on Fourth Street, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., we'll be holding a child identification program, where parents can bring their children, they're just four and up, and we will fingerprint your child, photograph your child, and put that information on a CD, and give that back to the parent, in the event that information is ever needed in the future. Hopefully, it's not ever needed, but it would be good information to have in case law enforcement ever needs that information at a later date. We'll also be offering another women's safety course that will begin July 22nd through the 26th. This course is free for all women that are interested in learning more safety techniques that they can employ, if they ever need to use them. We have a wide variety of safety programs that we put out, and we actually go to the firing range, we teach firearm safety, they'll have an opportunity to step into our shooting simulator, and be put into different scenarios, so for more information, they can go to longviewtexas.gov backslash women's safety for more information on that course, we'd love to have you. And then last Friday, as many of you know, was National Donut Day. Somehow, the police department was coerced by somebody at Julie Woods and Associates to square off against the fire department in a donut-eating contest. So we put together a team, there's our team from the police department strategizing, and coming up with a plan on how we were gonna, how we were gonna attack that, but in the end, the fire department prevailed. So, congratulations to the fire department, and this also dispels the myth that police officers are the only ones that like donuts, because they tore it up. So, congratulations to them, and they received the first donut trophy to hang wherever they're going to display it at, so. Chief Steelman's not here tonight, so I had to jab him a little bit. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Chief Bishop?
Chief, thank you, appreciate the update, that was, that was fun, it was a great little contest, and it's fun to see you guys out there, once again, showing your fun side, it makes us, Longview feel really good about that, so thank you, sir.
We still have the golf trophy.
That's right.
Thank you.
So with the three you hired, so what does that bring our total police?
Right now, right now, we have nine vacancies-
Okay.
After those three. But I'll, also, with those nine vacancies, when we, we added three additional positions to the police department when we took over the courtroom, so that's included in those nine.
Sure. Thank you very much.
Our total, is it 175 now?
Yes, we went from 172 to 175.
175, perfect.
So I actually moved those officers before we had them hired, so our numbers are going to be a little bit higher. We will have, we do have a couple more vacancies that will come up this month.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay, thank you.
We're at a consent agenda, any items council might pull off for separate discussion?
Moved and approved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. For the zoning, considered ordinance annexing your property, 7.307 acres, the city's ETJ. Ms. Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Bonds, staff has received a request from a property owner to annex approximately 7.307 acres of land situated within our ETJ, located directly adjacent to our city limits, on the north side of East Loop 281, north of Page Road in Harrison County. We previously hold two public hearings that were held prior to the final annexation, final annexation today. As part of this annexation, a service plan was prepared and presented at both public hearings. The service plan will be part of the ordinance if passed. Staff does recommend approval of this request, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions, Ms. Choi? Is there a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing, considered application Z19-01, Ms. Choi.
Thank you, the applicant, this is the same property, the applicant is requesting a rezone from agricultural to multifamily zoning district for approximately 5.991 acres, located on the north side of East Loop 281, north of Page Road. The applicant is proposing to rezone for the construction of a new senior independent living apartments. Currently, the property is situated, well, it was situated outside the city limits until y'all just recently approved it, but they are asking for annexation. Planning and Zoning Commission, along with staff, recommends approval of this request, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, it's now open, any comments? Public hearing's now closed, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing, considered application Z19-06, Ms. Choi.
Thank you, the applicant is requesting to rezone from agricultural to heavy commercial zoning district for approximately 2.43 acres, located on Garland Road. The property was annexed around 1980, when annexation occurs, the property is automatically assigned an agricultural zoning designation. The property is currently, it's an existing commercial business, but they would like to expand, so when development occurs, the property must be rezoned. This portion of Garland Road is maintained by Gregg County and is a local roadway. Staff, along with Planning and Zoning Commission, recommends approval of this request, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, it's now open. Ms. Choi, what is the business that's there right now, is that a feed store?
No, sir, it is a, I believe it's a pipeline company.
Okay, 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 I know what you're talking about, okay, I wasn't sure.
They're facing Eastman Road.
Right, they're facing Eastman Road, okay. Any other comments? Any speakers? Public hearing's now closed, is there a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Public hearing, considered application PD19-03, Ms. Choi.
Thank you, the applicant is requesting to amend Plan Development 49, to revise a site plan for approximately 3.409 acres, located on Walnut Hill Drive, east of Fourth Street. The original plan development spanned across several lots, and was originally intended for medical offices. The new site plan is proposing a one-story building that will be approximately 10,500 square feet in size, instead of the original layout, which actually showed two buildings, both 20,000 square feet in size. The use will remain the same, it will be medical offices, the setbacks will be 25 feet in the front, 10 on the rear, 10 on the sides, they will comply with buffering requirements, including having a fence along the adjacent residential properties. Planning and zoning, along with staff, recommends approval of this request, I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This requires a public hearing, which is now open, any speakers? I'm not sure we can allow this, I know the applicant, no, I'm kidding, Dr. Gillery's in the, in the audience, if anybody had a question, Dr. Gillery, this will be a very nice development, much-needed piece to our medical community. No other questions, comments, public hearing's now closed, is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Choi. We're now to action items, we'll consider resolution established the Longview Walk of Stars Task Force. Okay, here we go. All in favor? No, I'm kidding. Well, here's what we're going to do, I've asked you all to consider this, we have talked about it for a few weeks now, I would like for us to, I know I asked you all to bring names forward, and I don't expect us to do that publicly, we can, we can have our names submitted, and then we will ask these individuals, are they willing to serve on this committee, if we so desire to move this forward, and we will form the committees, and let that start taking shape. The reason I think this is important to go ahead and, if we're going to do it, if we agree to do it, it's time to move forward, because we're, we would like to see, I would like to see this come to some form of fruition by the time our Sesquicentennial Celebration occurs in February. So there's a lot to do. I've had so many phone calls this week and the last week about this, and every one of them have been so positive, because what they liked was the fact that, in our last meeting, we talked about the inclusions of what we could and couldn't do, we talked about the other cities that have done this, and what they, their exclusions, and what I like is that, as I've told you, I want this to be inclusive of as many people as we think are necessary to honor, and not exclusive, it's not a club that you exclude people from, it's a, it's a celebration of people that have done something in our community that deserves some recognition, and I think that's where people are really excited about it, you know, we, we can, the committee will come up with parameters, they will have different categories, you know, I've had many suggestions, athletics, education, celebrity, history, community impact, entrepreneurs, politics, law enforcement, you know, that's going to be so much fun to look into each one of those, and see where we might go with this. So, I'm excited, I hope you all will all submit your names, and then we will have our committee of Nona and Mr. Wright, who do all of our committee selections, go over these names, and make sure they all qualify out, and then we will form this task force, or not task force, this, this committee, if people so desire. I guess you can call it a task force, right? That's what it is, they have a task ahead of them. So, any discussion on that, counsel?
Is, is there any consideration that possibly we could get some existing organizations to be a part of this group, and I can't name any right offhand, but we might have some ready-made groups or organizations that might dovetail into this, to be a part of the process?
And, Mr. Moore, I think you've hit on a point, I think that's, and I've seen, I've seen Kristen's list, and it's a very, very good list, and she has included people from said organizations, that I think are very important, that will have a huge impact, you know, just because, say we name one person out of, out of a group, they will take that to their whole committee, just say you put someone, let's just say, out of Rotary Club, you know, I mean, the Rotary Club will be involved in this, or the Junior League, or the, you know, there's multiple organizations, I think that's what you're talking about, that will hopefully be involved, once we start putting, you know, chairman of each, or heads of each committees, and they can then form, I think each committee's going to have a bunch of fingerlings that go out from it, because I think it's going to be very-
It's going to be fun.
It's going to be fun, people want to be, people are calling me saying, can I be on the committee, can I be on the committee? And, you know, that's, that's exciting, when people want to serve in our community, and do something that'll, I think will be beneficial to the community. So, I think that's what you're saying, and I think that will certainly occur, so if we approve this, and it moves forward, then we will get our names submitted, and we will have Mr. Wright and Ms. Snotty check those off, and then we'll get, get to going, if that suits the council. So if that's, no discussions, or a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you all so much. Now, considered a resolution to establish the Longview 2020 Census Complete Count Committee. This will also be a task force in this, in this endeavor, to try our very best to get as many people counted in our upcoming census as we can, because I will say it over and over, I think it's extremely important that we are counted, every person, and so, I've asked you all to do the same thing, submit some names, and we will submit those names, and we will get this, this task force going. This is going to be one of those, a much more difficult task force to be a part of, but also is rewarding, because I think the benefits of this task force will be with us for years, until the next census takes place. I think we can see the fruits of the labor that will come from this for years to come. So I hope that there are some people on your list that are excited, energetic, that will get out and do this thing, and that will, they will, they will, as Mr. Moore said a minute ago, they will encompass other people to help with this process, because I know on my list, I've got, I've got broad ranges, you know, I want someone from the apartment association to head up all the apartments, you know, I want someone from the Ministry of Alliance to head up all the churches, you know, I think everyone should be involved. I want the superintendents to be involved, and get the kids involved, because if the kids get involved, the parents will get involved. Things like that, I think, are very important, when we start talking about big groups of people that need to be counted, and so, those are the kind of things that I'm looking for, that we're going to present as our, as our task force, to help this community move forward, and be counted, and I think that's extremely important. So I hope you all will, will see the need for this, and we will proceed with this, just as we look forward to this upcoming census, so any discussion on this item?
Mr. Dieter?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you all so much. Now, considered a resolution approving the change order number 10, not to exceed $503,000, remaining bond funds, Longview Arboretum and Nature Center, Mr. Carrion.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Mr. Bonds, back again to talk about the arboretum, and figure out what we're going to do with the remaining funds from the bond election that- remaining funds from the bond election that was passed in November. And so just to give you a little bit of a history as to where we are, and today is the Longview Arboretum and Nature Center purchased the property back in May of 2017, and then in April, we awarded the contract, which is $2 million originally, to Iron Horse, and we also did a decrease to that contract right away, down to about $1.5 million. The funding from that was primarily done from the arboretum and nature center as well as contributions from a number of governmental entities and grants. Then in October, they came back with the change order to do a couple of other items, and then in November, the bond passed, which provided for $1.5 million in funding for the arboretum itself. Then in March, we asked city council to approve a change order for $391,000, which included putting landscape and plants back into the project. That was the first allocation from the bond funds themselves. So there is a remaining $1.1 million that we had discussed as to how we would utilize those funds. And so we met a number of times with the arboretum itself. We've had conversations with, with how those funds would be spent. And so what we have come up with is a change order for $500,000, which the, the maximum allowable under state law is 25% of the original contract, which was $2 million. That's why we can increase the contract to, by about $500,000. The reason that we want to do that in the existing contract is so that we can have a complete project, if you will, by the time it opens. Also, the items that we have placed here are items that were in the contract that were deducted out, or they are of a larger scope than what were originally bid. And so those items include, oh, and one thing that is on the screen there that I wanted to make sure to mention is all the funds will be, will be spent within the 26 acres that the city owns. The arboretum chose to retain ownership of their property at 706 Citten Street. So the, the first item is putting landscape into gardens five, six, and seven, and those are identified here on the, on the graphic. There are 12 gardens throughout the entire formerly landscaped area, which is currently under construction at about seven acres total. The next item is for the stream to have gunite, which is a concrete liner essentially on that stream. The current contract has a portion of that stream already that is, will be in gunite. This section would have been in a rubber liner, and it's just more of a challenge to maintain. And so we felt it's appropriate to be able to do that while they're all out there to do, put that in there. There was no lighting for the site at all in the original contract that had to be removed, and so we're adding those, those light fixtures back in. And then one of the items was a bathroom. The arboretum is interested in having a unique feature, so the, in Sulfur Springs, they have a glass bathroom, and so it's mirrored reflection on the outside, and then when you're on the inside, it's see-through, so...
Doesn't work.
So that's, that's one of the, the options we have. At a number of our parks, we, we like the CXT restrooms. They're easy to maintain, they're vandal resistant, and, and we're able to main them quite efficiently. And so we're working with the arboretum to end the contract to figure out what we can do with the restroom, but that's, that's what we're working towards anyway. And then lastly, within the contract would be the, to enclose the entire facility with a fence. Again, we talked about control of access of the site. If it's going to be a paid facility, then we need to be able to enclose the, the entire property. And so that's the, those would be the items that are in the change order. We would add those to the existing contract. The anticipated completion is early fall. Again, we've had weather delays, and now some of these change orders and those kind of things, and so it's just continue to push that, that completion date back a little bit. So that leaves a remaining $600,000 for phase two, and we, we say phase two because phase one's going on right now. So we would start phase two immediately essentially in getting that going, and would anticipate the construction of this occurring spring of, of next year. It wouldn't impact the construction or the, the operating of the existing arboretum or once it does open, or had limited impact anyway. And so the items that we've identified, again, from the original Lady Bird Johnson master plan, the updated master plan that was approved in 2015, were having an additional outdoor pavilion, entry kiosks. Again, when you have multiple entry points, if you want to have a ticketed event, you need to have something there for them to be able to, be identified, to be able to access. But then also the potential with membership cards to be able to swipe as far as entry into the facility. And then lastly, additional parking. So those are all the items. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but we hope that you guys would, would pass that resolution for that change order as well as understand what projects will be forthcoming.
Mr. Karen, I want to thank both you and the arboretum board for sitting down and coming up with a very, very logical plan for this. I think everybody's getting, be pleased when this is all said and done. I know this has been, it's been a back and forth negotiation, but everybody's been, been very good about this, and I think it's coming to a really good resolution, and I appreciate everybody's willingness to give and take on this. So thank you for all the time you've spent doing this, and, and I think this is, as long you're going to be the ones to benefit from this patch of this, of this bond package to, for this arboretum as it is. So I think we have something to really be proud of, and I'm looking forward to it, and I applaud the arboretum board for seeing the foresight they have to look forward and see what we can do, and I love that we're spending this money on city property. I think that's very important. So thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Karen?
Just one quickie.
Yes, sir.
How vandal-proof is this glass restroom?
The, the one in, again, the, the one in Sulfur Springs is on their courtyard, and it's open, and so I don't believe that they've had a, any major instances or issues with that. There is some potential copyright issues with it, so that's where some of the, our hesitation is with putting in something like this as well. So again, we're trying to, we'll, we'll work through it, but we'll have a restroom of some type, and that's, that's, I guess that's the, the main thing, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. We're now to eyes of community interest. Mr. Moore.
I would like to invite everybody to a town hall meeting on Tuesday, July 9th at 7:00 PM at the Pine Tree ISD Community Center. I'm going to start with just some updates on the bond projects that are taking place and slated for West Longview, but the primary focus will be a discussion and seeking input on what will be included in McQuarter Park East. And so we're, we're soliciting suggestions for that. Second, Saturday, July 13th at 10:00 AM, the city's planning department and the Gregg County Historical Commission are hosting our second historical marker workshop. This is very appropriate, given our sesquicentennial that's coming up next year. So if you have any interest whatsoever in finding out what it takes to get a historical marker, you need to be there Saturday morning, July 13th. Third, for my sesquicentennial moment this month, I'd like to highlight a project that our Long, our Longview Library is undertaking. The library staff is interested in hearing from citizens what it was like to grow up in Longview and how Longview has been shaped by historical and cultural events. For example, where in Longview were you when President Kennedy was assassinated? What recollections do you have of the civil rights movement in Longview? Where did you like to shop? What were your favorite restaurants? All of these questions and more help us understand how Longview became the city it is today and will help future generations remember our history. All of these memories will be audio recorded and played on the library's podcast titled "Longview 150 Stories" all throughout January to May of next year. Also, each audio file will be permanently saved on the library's digital archive. Every citizen, whether you grew up here or have just lived here a short time, will have a chance to preserve a piece of Longview history. The library staff is asking for up to 150 audio files, no longer than seven minutes each, and no more than three entries per person. There's no specific decades that they're looking for, however, they'd like it to be as diverse and unique as possible. And also, on November 1st of this year, if you don't have sufficient audio equipment at home, the library's going to schedule time for patrons to come to the library and have your story recorded. And also, if, if you do, if you care, citizens are also welcome to record their own audio files and email them to 150stories@longviewtexas.gov. Finally, I'd like to just show a short video of our Longview 150 Planning Committee from a couple of weeks ago. We had a photo session that recreated basically a photo session from the centennial group in the same location. People were dressed in various outfits from various timeframes. I, I had a choice of a lime green leisure suit or my Navy uniform, and I chose the, the Navy uniform, but there were a number of outstanding outfits there, and I appreciate the, the group participating in that. Mayor, that's it.
Thank you so much, Mr. Moore. Ms. Snotty.
Good evening, everyone. Councilman Moore, I'd like to see you in that lime green suit, though.
I would not.
And Scott, I was just thinking, cleaning a glass bathroom would probably be a nightmare outside as well as inside. I, I don't know. That's a nightmare. I just want to say thank you, Scott, for the meeting and an excellent presentation the other night at the Stafford Park Womack Meeting. I was a little hesitant at first. I didn't think people were going to show up, but the community did. So a special thanks to the people in the community. They came, they filled out the questionnaires. I mean, I thought we was going to have to start flicking the lights on and off so they wouldn't leave, but a good turnout and excellent presentation, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snotty. Mr. White.
I just want to recognize this weekend as being Juneteenth weekend at Broughton Park. I apologize for not having any photos or any events to mention, but I'm sure they're listed around the city, and I encourage everyone to get involved. It's a very important part of our history here in Longview. Thank you.
You know whose birthday is on Juneteenth, right?
I wonder whose?
That's right, buddy.
Whoa!
That's right.
That's what's special.
See? There you go.
I know, I know.
Mrs. Shihara.
I also have some upcoming park meetings, so there's both of mine happening next week. So on Tuesday, next Tuesday, June 18th, our discussion will be for Spring Creek Park, which is our Harrison County Park. And then on Thursday, June 20th, that will be about Patterson Park. You can see both of those locations, and the meetings are both at 6:00. There'll be similar formats to the parks' meetings that have already occurred, with Scott giving some presentations about the recommended items, but also looking for everyone's feedback on what they'd like to see focused on in their neighborhood park. So please, please, please make plans to attend. We really do want your input. If you use that park or know people that use those parks, this is your time to come and tell us what you want to see there. So I hope that you can make it, and would love to have a great turnout, just like Nona's.
Mr. Purtle.
Nothing for me.
Can we excuse Mr. Wright? He's on vacation. A second? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Mr. Bonds?
I don't have anything.
Well, I have a few things tonight on community interest items, but as you're going to see, I have changed it up a little bit. Because when I read these things and I have the big long paragraphs to read, I tend to start reading really fast, and my wife said I sound like I'm talking in a foreign language and that I'm not being respectful of those events because I'm going so fast to get through it. And so I will no longer do that. We will put those events up on the screen. I will read you the highlights, and then you're welcome to go to our website and look at any event that you want to look at because I do not want to take away from anyone's event because I tend to get moving a little bit faster than I should. And I do know a foreign language or two, just so you know. So upcoming events, we have the Adult Summer Reading Club, the kickoff parties on Saturday, June the 15th. We have slip and slide kickball tournament Saturday, June the 29th, patriotic pup fashion show, and weenie dog races on July the 4th. And those are a blast, by the way. For information, go to longviewtexas.gov/calendars. And upcoming city events, community events, we have Juneteenth activities, June the 15th. Annexation, celebration, celebrating Texas statehood closes June 15th. Historic Longview Farmers Market goes on through November. For more information about those, check out the visitlongviewtexas.gov/events. Thank you, guys, for doing that for me on short notice today. They, they didn't know I was doing that until I got here today, but they, they pulled through. So for all these events, please go and look at our calendar. It's a great calendar. It shows a lot of things that are going on, and you can see all the information you want to see about it and not have to listen to me read through it so fast that you can't understand me. So thank you for your indulgence. Okay, survey question.
What?
Do I?
Nothing.
Are you in favor of more billboards and digital signs in Longview or less billboards and digital signs in Longview? I wrote this question this week because we've had a lot of interest in this as this, the newspaper has covered a few articles about it, and we've had some interest at the council. And I think, I always like to know what the community thinks because, you know, I don't ever want to assume that we know what, what they think, and so I like to know, and the way I like to know is I ask people and they respond. And I can tell you, this survey, I didn't think it's going, is the most responded-to survey since last May. I was very surprised because, you know, things have changed. Things have changed in the community, and so we have to be able to change with it. We can't be dinosaurs, but we have to also listen to what the community wants us to, to do. And so this is why I asked this question, and anybody want to guess what the response was?
Less.
Huh?
Less.
Eighty-four, eighty-six percent less, 14% more. And I'm just, I was curious to see, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not real surprised because I know, I went through this in 2003 with this, with this sign ordinance, and it was a very, a very difficult discussion. People lost friends over it. People had heartache over this for a long time. It was a very difficult decision. And so, you know, this is just, I don't know, this doesn't mean this can't be discussed. It just means I think we need to think about what we're going to do as, as we move forward. If we want to go forward with this, we certainly can, but I'm, I was, I was curious to see what the public had to say about it, and I'm glad people responded. I appreciate people take these surveys because we really do get information from it, and it's valuable information. Whether we use it or not, it's valuable information, so I'm glad the, the public took time to, to look into this. Because, you know, like I say, times have changed. You know, we're, we're in an age where, I mean, to me, billboards are your Facebook page now. You know, you, you stop at a red light, you don't see people looking up. You see them looking at their cell phones because they're stopped and they can do it. And that's, to me, that's where all the advertising goes on, is that gum, cellphone. It's unbelievable. So, okay, back to the next question. When planning your family's summer vacation, what are you most looking for? Relaxation, fun, adventure, and opportunity to learn about a new place, or haven't had a vacation in who knows how long? Well, I'm glad that, that one is not the top, but relaxation, 44%, which I think is pretty much for all of us go on vacation.[1740.83]